I want to call to order the regular scheduled meeting, Paintsville City Council, Monday, September the 11th, 2017. Do we have somebody that could lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Ms. Sarah?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, please.
Tim?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Patricia?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
David?
Here.
We have some fine young people with us here today. I might add this, I think Pikeville had a bad weekend. Because it looks like here that we defeated them in several events. And we would like to recognize the following teams for their All-A championships. Paintsville's girls soccer team, coached by Mark Norden, and assistant coaches Dexter Allen, Brian Oxer, and Janie Allen. At the present time, they are 7-2-1. I didn't know you could tie, Coach. Are you allowed to tie? It's a good record, anyway. They swept the All-A tournament held in Pikeville and took the win on Saturday against Pikeville with a score of 6-5. And the last time you won the All-A was 2009? Is that correct? Okay. And we have some pins for you, some city pins, to give to your players. If we've miscounted any, just feel free to come down by the office and we'll take care of it. Paintsville boys soccer team, coached by Dustin Adams, assistant coach Barry Atkins, Chad Trader, and Luis Pacheco? Is that close enough? They also won the All-A championship against Pikeville with a final score of 2-0. The last time they won the All-A was 2015. The Paintsville volleyball team, coached by Dawn Kenner and assistant coach Jessica Davis, obtained their All-A championship after defeating Pikeville. They were All-A runner-up in 2016 and 2011. And they're not here tonight because they are competing against Johnson Central, correct? So Ms. Jamie will be collecting their pins. And we don't want... We don't want to keep all you young people here for this adult meeting because it would probably be pretty boring. So what we're going to do, we're going to give your coaches the pins, and feel free to leave if you need to. Is that okay? Congratulations to everybody. From FEMA, from Frankfurt, that said they're putting all mitigation funds on hold at this time because of the Hurricane Harvey in Texas. And also, that was before Irma ever hit. So we just want everybody to know that, that it was nothing to do with us at all. That email came from Frankfurt and the director, and that's basically all we got at this time. We hate that. We hate that for you all. We really do. So I guess we're just stuck on holding Ms. Kim until they let us know what they're going to do? Is that correct?
She's living here tonight or anybody's calling from there?
No.
I was just wondering if, I guess we could find out, but I know we're still not going to get it, but I was hoping that they had already gotten that acquisition money into the Phase 1. So at least as soon as they get anything freed up, that we could get that, or do you know how that's going?
They did not get the acquisition money into Phase 1 before this email came out, not yet, anyway.
I hate it, though.
Well, I do, too. I hate it for them, and, you know, we all know what a dire need they are in. We understand that, but we have no control over the federal government. So my advice to you is to get on the phone to Hal Rogers, Ms. McConnell, and just do whatever you need to do to get them to free those funds back up to where they can move the acquisition deal back into Phase 1. I know I'm going to be on the phone, and I'm sure all these city council members will, too. And I guess what we need to do at this time also is to welcome Mr. David Van Hoos back on city council. We appointed him during a special call meeting, and he has been sworn in. So he is good to go. We hated to lose Mr. Lewandowski, by the way, who's sitting in the audience at this time. So next on the agenda, we need an approval of the minutes, regular meeting, August 14th, and also the special call meeting on August 30th. Now, we have made a few corrections on those minutes of the regular call meeting because a certain name was misplaced. It was just a typo, nothing major. So we have redone all those. So I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I oppose it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need approval for the departmental reports, please.
I'll make that motion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I need an approval to pay the bills as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next thing on the agenda, we get to the business part of it, is to appoint a member to the housing authority. I've had some concern from some city council members about the appointment, so can I have a motion to table that appointment, please?
I'll make that motion. We table the appointment for the 10th or 14th.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't even know who it was.
Well, I would rather not give any names out in public, so let's just go ahead and table that till we can get whatever we need to get worked out, worked out. We need to set our property tax rate for 2017. I am going to recommend that rate be 0.196. I'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion now, if anybody wants to.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also need an approval to purchase our health insurance. All of you have in your packets the information that you need. I think we bid out that insurance girls to how many people?
Four.
Four different people. As far as I can see, and the way that I try to do things fiscally, is that we actually need to go with the lowest possible rate we can get, but you also need to look at what the office visits are going to cost and what the deductibles and the drug prescription rate is.
Well, I know what Ronnie has as his supplement, and I know they're really low in the next United. I know if you manage what I don't know about La Crosse and Shield, but I called Kim earlier, and she said that the bid with Maverick wasn't United.
Yes.
And I know that that isn't the cheapest you can get on a supplement right now.
Yes.
And she thought that one was low, and I'm looking at all of them, and I think that's the lowest bid that's come in as far as getting them.
I've got some numbers written out for you, and Mavericks was the lowest bid. And even on their... If they go... Even if we go to a buy-up 2, then it looks like to me that the office visit goes down from 25 to 50, as opposed to the Base 1 and the buy-up 1, which the office visits are 30-60, 30-60. That was the same with all of them, by the way. Do you all need a little more time to look over those, or are you ready to go ahead and...
I'm sure, and I am impressed that you've got four bids this time. That's the first time that we've had four bids.
Listen, I'm going to tell you something.
This is the first time in years that we've even had more than two, and you've gone to do that one.
Yes.
And I'm really impressed with that.
And Jim, I'm going to tell you something. Those two girls right there have worked hard.
I'm saying, I'm...
You go ahead. You go ahead.
Okay, I mean, I'm impressed with that. I'm saying, I'm giving you a lot of credit for this, okay? So, and the only question I have was one question, and some of the other proposals that are later talking, how many people do we have over 65?
We actually have six.
Four, too.
We have six.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay, because they said you could save a little bit of money if we went and used theirs as a supplement, and just Maverick didn't include that in this, did you know that? But it needs to always be done if it works out that way, right?
Right, but we kind of looked at it and didn't think we can do it.
Nobody did, not even, yeah.
Right now, our personnel policy doesn't...
It's just like a supplement, two of them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. That's what I mean. Mr. Gillis had the insurance, but I was just curious about you all, if you all discussed that with anyone else.
We have, we had talked about that before, and we did talk about it, but it was all the brothers.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now our personnel policy doesn't make that in there.
So we don't, if it does decide that we can't?
We need to re-grad our personnel policy.
We'd have to redo it. How many, and one other question, how many full weeks would we have? How many total full weeks?
We actually, well, you know, we had found them in through the longer...
Oh, them all?
Sixty-nine, they had a first name, and sure, they had a career.
How many?
So at sixty-nine and nineteen?
Eighty-three, though, eighty-three.
Eighty-three, you're handling housing and everything?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious. I don't know anything.
Yeah, that's all.
Because, you know, it's such a concern for everybody, and I appreciate you girls working so hard, and I think it looks...
Yeah, I mean, you did what you made me, and did Maverick, going with the United Delaware. Okay, I'm talking about with that.
So we need a motion to go with Maverick, and then do you want...
Now, which plan are you going to do?
I'll make that motion.
Base 1 or Base 2?
Which plan do you want to do, though? Do you want to do Base 1? Do you want to do Buy-Up 1 or Buy-Up 2?
What do you girls think?
What do you call me? Buy-Up 2, Buy-Up 2 is actually what would be directly employees.
That's exactly what I was looking at.
She thinks Buy-Up 2 would be the best for your employees.
For the difference in the money, it's not...
I agree with her.
I'll make the motion if we go with Maverick or Buy-Up 2.
I say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Also on the agenda, I need council's approval to advertise for bids for Blacktop on Main Street.
I'll make that motion. There's a bid on Main Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Mr. Pack, you needed, you called me at 4:00, and you needed something. Did you leave that information with me, or have you got it with you? We are allowed that just as the agenda, correct?
Yes, we are. We are prepared for some of the issues we have in the water plant with the failure of the membrane. A year ago, we replaced one train, four trains, 162 membranes, or modules, in any of the plant. We replaced that one train, and flaws. Guys, we need to work with them day after day, kind of apparently, you know. Work for some time, with GD or Zingon on this. Finally got paid with them Thursday. I made it in no very well. Came back with another proposal Friday afternoon, and we had scheduled a special meeting with the commission to consider that. And they didn't agree to approve this provision proposal by $125,000, $268,000, $10,000 less than the first proposal came into our authority.
As new as those are, that may be, I don't know, sometimes warranted or something?
It's a pro-rate of warranty, and we're almost five years in on that.
Are you talking about if you draw me home down there, and that's what you're talking about, huh?
They wouldn't want to. There's, each of these modules has got $40,000, five of them in it, and those five are breaking. And it doesn't actually have to go through their, and finds once they're broken and repaired. And it's one of our concerns, we've had, I believe, nine entries in that process. None of them serious, but a cruel situation, but it's scary. They take off that, but it's scary. What's the life that they thought it would replace these? Do you think these, they're estimated at seven, 10 years, that's the normal life of them?
I don't know. I don't know. It's huge.
So if the life of them is seven to 10 years, how come your warranty's just...
It's pro-weighted. It's pro-weighted, they're just like a battery, you know? And if you get to the tail end of it, you haven't got any money left.
Yeah, that's right, you go advanced, you get so much off in two months.
That sounds like some of my basketball team. So what do you need us to do here?
Just maybe approval to make that purchase.
So you all can pay for it, right?
So you just need our approval for you all to pay for it?
Okay, that would be the bill I...
Okay, so you did budget for that? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes our business. I'm going to open it up to council, if council's got anything.
I have a question. Our II project, where can we stand on that, please?
We have a pre-close, and we'll page on that II project, the road development on the 20th. And that's where the documents all decide, and the contractors go forward.
So we will leave that in the comments?
Not, not the way it starts. This is a slower time.
How long of time are we going to worry to? Because this is something that's been going on for a while, before I came, councilmember, and I was on the board, it's supposed to be voted on over a year ago, a decision made.
But it was a long process. We got where we needed to be on that. But you're talking, the project has to be completed by April of 19. We've got about a year and a half in there.
So we're going to be out of the funds for a year and a half?
We don't really know. To get back into compliance, you've got to get your flow back within limits, and there's no way of voting when that's going to happen. We're looking around what time to yield what we can to get flow off the plant. It's a slow process.
Okay, can we ask you this? If you're not in compliance, can you run any more TAPs? Say we've got new businesses want to come into town. Say they want to build. Are we going to be allowed to run any more TAPs if you're out of compliance?
We honor a sewer sanction, which is commonly called a TAP. You can apply for waivers on those on an individual basis, but there's no guarantee on that.
Anything else from council? You got something else, Ms.?
Is there a status deal, anybody can have a hand, any businesses being built or developed or anything until 2019?
But, but...
We can't put it out in a timeframe, because you've got unknown amounts of water coming in this.
There's no way to tell when that'll leave, is what you're saying, right?
Okay, say that the building's already here.
No problem.
That's no problem, correct?
See, the building's under 25 million. You can't get a building from the county division of water approved if they got us on this sanction. Have you left the bids on this II project yet? And contractors aren't letting us borrow, probably real quickly. But they're talking, too, they want to go.
You're a good time to start, man. Start digging down, thought it's a bit, three, still, you're a good time to start.
And I've just got, what about the Teas Branch project?
The sewer line on the left-hand side of that, here, they found this solid rock that we're going to put back. And then as soon as the property on the right-hand side...
Are we still looking October the 15th?
That's what I told them.
Okay.
But I'm just going to count on that other property to be ready for the work.
Where, like, is the start on the right? Location, why?
Roughly, right-hand side, probably the formal location of our wall, the gate.
Right above Lady P. Inns, right there, Lady Girl's building.
Where?
On the right-hand side, the last building on the right, right up from there, you keep building the next building. I'm pretty sure that's about where it was put in. Certainly have to start there.
Okay, one last question for you, Mr. Pack. Your II project, if I'm going to advertise for bids on Blacktop for Main Street, I don't want to lay Blacktop down, then all of a sudden...
Can we discuss that with Jimmy and Joe? There are a couple of potential issues down the road, down the floor, City Hall, but that may be some time off for correction.
And what about our sidewalk grant?
The issue on that corner is more than a street, or it's already played back?
Well, we just need some assurances. You know, we don't want, this council, we don't want to lay Blacktop, and we don't want to lay sidewalk if it's going to be torn back out.
For sure. We actually, we just flunked that whole section from West Street, almost the end of that street, and there's a section sewer out on the other end. But the only place we have that much issues around the street, sidewalk, on that end, or at the corner, City Hall, and then across the line that we built.
I have a question. You talk about the smog. Back in the 40s and 80s and 60s, your homes were being constructed, was the city owner, the city, they could build their homes, were they not advised by the city to run their drains and water into the drains?
But that's what you had, but it was a different time. You weren't trading your sewage that way. It was quite different.
But if they were advised to do that, now you're coming back and saying, we can't do this, and you're going through, you're saying, okay, we're smoking this house, it's violating, it's up to the city to enforce, it's up to the city. You're punishing the homeowners for what the city told them they're about to do. Now, is that right?
What we're dealing with is the city ordinance, not placing that, maybe so.
But you see what I'm asking?
I haven't, so I'm about seven years old on a house without them.
But, I mean, you don't punish the homeowners, the city, you don't punish the homeowners for, you don't have to tell them what it's supposed to do?
I can't answer that. You know, we're in this situation, it's all contributes to our problem we have, the excess block, and some more matters that have to be addressed.
Is there anything else from council? Anything else?
I'd just like to see if you can...
I would, too, Ms. Patricia. I would, too. All right, I'm going to open it up to the floor now, if there's anybody on the floor. Dale?
I think it's a request for, see what you can think about it. Is there any way that the council and the city could request, you know, a letter to be sent from the governor, state representative, to sound off, who's this, that, and the servant this up here, you know, to put a letter in to do something? It's not like everybody's playing with it, but the time it gets from here to there, and then that puts it, and I'm not saying that it's not a big...
Yeah, so...
You know, they would get, do what they're supposed to do with it, and then move it on to the next state to get laid in some way.
So you want our office to draft a letter?
Just a request for, I want to get a good, my school will get more away, and the person calling, you know, and putting a hold on it. You know, it's just one, two and a half years. It's pretty much high time to put a label.
I don't see any reason why we can't draft a letter.
You know, send it to the governor and stuff.
Now, Ms. Kim's looking at me kind of funny, and she's got something on her, you might want to ask her right there, because she...
I was saying, is that something that is possible?
One thing we can, but right now, you know, the federal government's on code, so, you know, there really isn't anything we can do. You know, the federal government, so they have all been getting caught. We're not the only one in the same shape, you know? There are other places that's also on the same shape, but that's there, they've got one on our house, and they all are on code, on fraud and fraud.
But you know, it's ridiculous that they can't have the one that are going to get complete, what they've already started, go ahead and finish up this project, and throw them on, and pulling in a million more.
Yeah, right, you know, they said, they've got lots to say, you know, they're out there with lots of problems going on, and they want it on.
Well, I can tell you this, in Rockport, Texas, there's not 50% of the homes standing where people can live in. I mean, Houston has got, and I just got back from there, Houston's getting all the publicity. Yeah, they flooded, you know? They didn't get their houses torn down. And I really feel sorry for the people in Aransas Pass and Rockport, Texas. I mean, I've got pictures to show, I mean, it's hard to believe that those people, FEMA's there, I saw them, they're there, but they're not getting in the publicity. It's the big city of Houston, you know, and federal government is going to pour a lot of money in there, and they are, and that's the only reason I can figure out. I guess they figure that's more of a need right now than Paintsville, Kentucky. And I'm not saying that's right. I'm just saying that's my opinion of their thinking, that they're pouring all the funds they can to help those people. I mean, there's people with kids sleeping on the street down there. I saw them. It's terrible.
I'm not making that up.
It's terrible.
That's not what I'm saying.
Oh, I know, Dale, I'm just saying, that's the way they're thinking.
You fear a problem this right here, which is starting about almost a year. Still...
This process includes two and a half years. Because I'm...
It's called politics. It's called politics, that's what it's called.
But I do, my suggestion that, I know I will, and I hope all the people here will, and all the city council, write a letter, and, you know, and just express how important it is to us that we get ours done, too. I know that the other...
I know that the other one comes first, and I well understand that, but I see, I know there's frustration, too. I'm very straightforward.
We have a young man from Paintsville that works for him, Mr. Rogers.
Yes, we do.
And I will make a call. I promise.
Lakers can or claws can or not, I mean, we're probably not gonna change, but...
It's basically what you call go to place because FEMA is probably just facing them. They don't ask money to do anything with it because it's all how our government wastes the money.
Well, absolutely.
And that's facts. I mean, it's the truth, any way you look at it, it's all...
I agree, Jim. Totally. Anything else from the floor? I'll need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that adjourn.
All in favor? Opposed. We stand adjourned.